But it's working though, I'm doing five battery. It's gonna take me all summer.
Oh, it's a, it's a long process. Oh, we do well. Battle of bands out back.
Are we doing that?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I haven't got.
All I need is some power board. This park will be over here.
So where in the? Yeah.
Where the ski toe used to be. I think she knows. When ball feels.
One nice day.
That will take long.
I went through, I have my desk. Things this year. My sticky nose definitely I started.
Haven't seen you walking. Been ready for hours.
My dad can't move too much right out of my.
Take my back and feel rude. I've got twenty nine on my, oh my gosh, this never again, it's just a time axe.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Actually, the TV says. He's probably.
They don't usually.
Well, and if it wasn't today.
She ain't graduating now. I know what you're feeling. I have no. She got me, he's a senior.
My granddaughter.
So when do they advertise for that? When the beginning of the school year begins for the junior. That's fine.
Lasted, um, yeah, it'd be lasting.
Always reading. Who stands? One nation. Did you principal? Liberty and ten thousand. We have two adjustments to the agenda. We're going to move. Item sixteen, the superintendent's report before. Number fifteen, the administrative and program report. And due to a prior commitment. The outdoor education report of others and Michael Stevens will be forwarded directly after the warrants. All right. Are there any other adjustments? Okay. Seeing no other adjustments. Public comment. We endorse the. I don't have my paper right in front of me. We allow everybody to speak. Three minutes. All I ask is that you be nice, playful. Anybody have any? Public comments? Seeing none. Camera, is there another page of people on?
No, that's it.
Okay, I just see the arrow, that's why I was wondering.
There's one, two, three, four, five, five individuals.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
A motion to approve a ministry. Kevin.
We'll approve the minute. What would nine twenty twenty three barring any errors or omissions?
Second.
You got a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Being done all favor. Five one. Okay, well, Devin.
Like to make a motion to direct. The superintendent of schools to authorize payment by the town treasurer to each body listed. Here in the sum set against each name contained in the school payroll warrant. PR twenty three dash twenty four in the amount of one hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and ninety nine dollars and two cents. PR twenty three twenty four dash two in the amount of. Two thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty two cents. PR twenty three dash twenty four D in the amount of fifty one thousand, five hundred and eighty eight dollars, two cents. PR twenty three dash twenty four D dash two in the amount of two thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and ninety four cents. May purse twenty three dash twenty five in the amount of fifty seven thousand, eleven dollars and twenty five cents. May purse twenty three dash twenty six in the amount of thirty seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty three dollars and twenty five cents. May purse twenty three dash twenty seven, the amount of eighty nine dollars and sixty nine cents. And main purse twenty three dash twenty eight, the amount of seventeen dollars and eighty five cents. On May twenty five, two thousand twenty three and PR twenty three dash twenty five in the amount of. One hundred and thirty nine thousand, five hundred and fifty seven dollars and twenty three cents. And PR twenty three dash twenty five D in the amount of thirty nine thousand, twelve dollars and forty two cents on June eight. Two thousand, ah, twenty thousand, twenty three.
Second, my son, you want me to do that again?
Backwards, maybe not. I say I got through it, but I'll stumble all my time.
Any discussion? Seeing that all available. Final. Motion on the payroll. Mr. Cameron. Oh, to direct the schools to authorize payment by the town treasurer for each party listed herein. The sum set against each name contained. Paying part. Eight twenty three back twenty six. In the amount of eight thousand, hundred and forty five dollars and seventy eight cents. SA twenty three dash twenty seven in the amount of nine thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty cents. Student accounts. AP twenty three dash forty one in the amount of thirty two thousand, eight hundred and twenty nine dollars and eighty nine cents. And AP twenty three forty two in the amount of seventy thousand, three hundred and seventy seven dollars and thirty five cents. On May twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. And SA twenty three dash twenty eight in the amount of nine hundred and sixty dollars and ten cents. Student accounts. And AP twenty three forty three in the amount of one hundred and twenty eight thousand, four hundred and seventy five dollars. And fifty one cents on June eighth at twenty twenty three. Second. Is there any discussion? Table one. Seeing none, all table. Five one. This is the look of the day. Then Stevens, you're right.
Well, I'm right.
Now I've got some pictures that she's showing that we. You heard about our outdoor ed program. Um, it's been going on for years and years and we're just the latest. Yes, we are the logic. It is such an amazing class. I only joined in two and a half months ago to fill in. When the other teachers was out on the turning leave and it has been. So amazing and now I'll be teaching it going forward. So. Um, the main activities that we do. Uh, so this is middle school outdoor ed. The main activities that we do are in fall. Got, uh, start with kayaking because that's the weather's still good enough. And then mountain biking, we have a relationship with the gear library, but when their lending season is over for the bikes. They give them for a week or so, um, for the kids to use in our class. And then, uh, from there, I guess, well, you did, there's a bit of a bumper.
Yeah, so we kind of fill that space in between like our actual seasons, like in between fall and winter. We'll do some other things like, um, we definitely do a lot of like leave no trace principles, we spend the seven leave no trace principles, we do some like fun activities with that. Um, we also do like some survival skills. Um, we teach them like, you know, about like if you are in woods and you're. Um, what's mean that you can survive and, you know, start a fire and build a shelter and all of those things. So shelter building is something that. We're hoping to incorporate and then I know that this woman in high school is looking to do that as well. Um, and then we get into winter time and we have lots of, um, snow shoeing and skate cross country skiing, of course. Um, so it's really a great class. I don't know if camera wants to just kind of go through the features and we can kind of tell you what's going on here. So. This was a trip that that we were actually, I'm pretty sure this was the one that we took. Oh, you have to watch this video. This is a video camera. It should play. I hope so. I wish that the sound would play on it because you can hear a student. So I love blue earrings. So we kept seeing a blue hair and I was like, I have to take a video of this, you guys. And so when I was watching this the other day prepping for this, you can hear a student saying. Oh, my goodness, oh, my goodness, I've never seen one of those. It was really an awesome moment. So that was really cool. So we go down to, um, Danian's curve. So we did that only one time in the fall because the water level was just right where it needed to be and our. Our mentor, Mr. Chronic was like, yes, we're good to go. And so, so this was us at the, um. At the boat landing there and, um, in the white hat is actually my son Trace who just graduated this past weekend. And so we got to have, um, Trace and another student Brady Versa join us this year as our, um, high school helper. So that was. Super awesome, um, to help both of them and they were, they were an awesome help.
And they get high school credit for that too. I mean, it's not just them volunteering their time. That is, they're legitimately helping too.
Yes, absolutely. They, they were really good teachers and the kids really looked to them from time to time for, for different things. So. So this is us at the field hockey field. So they think that that hill is really like where it's at. They always want to go into the hill and go down the hill on their cross country skis, which is interesting if you've ever tried. Definitely on cross country skis. So, um, but they really pick it up quite nicely and we're, I'm like, how fortunate are we to have? These trails literally fifty feet from our school. Like, it's just really awesome. And so yesterday we had our monthly, um, outdoor ed cohort meeting. So we're part of a northern made outdoor ed cohort. And we work with, um, organizations called Rural Aspirations. And so they partnered with us to do some different things. Um, and so one of the people that was on the meeting with us yesterday, he was really expressing like. Oh, like his jealousy of like our, our, you know, outside playground at sea hall day. And I was like, you know, we're really are fortunate because. We can go right out the back door of school and put our boats right in at the boat landing. We can go right out back and just, we have all of our skis right there. We hop onto the trail and we can just go as far as we have time for. So it's amazing. This is up on the golf course. Um, the golf course is gracious enough to let us bring the kids up there. And so again, the hills, they think are super cool. So not as much going up them, but.
I think the, the best part of this has been seeing kids who have either no experience whatsoever, were not considered to be, you know, the athletic kids. Just totally thrive in this environment. We had a kid a few weeks ago when we started the spring kayaking. Would never been kayaking before. And you never know how that's gonna go.
Yeah.
Literally by the end of the first class, he was so far ahead of everybody else. He's the fastest paddler I've ever seen. And he loves it. I mean, we were up to go fun the other day too, and he was just, he wanted to go. He was just, he got himself down. But, um, and you, you wouldn't expect that. I mean, look at a kid who's never kayak before, but it's just fantastic.
Yeah. And it's so cool to see them outside of the classroom like this because it's like sometimes in the classroom, especially a dot one student, he's quite reserved in the classroom. But you know, so he's just was really excited about that's trace right there looking back. It was really cold that day or for that day. That was really, really cold, but. They are troopers out there and they, they're bummed when we have to go in and they're just ready to do anything and it's really awesome. So. My son was really excited to, to be a part of this because in seventh grade he got to do outdoor ed. And so in seventh grade, he was going through that time in his life where he was kind of a, you know, little pudgy stage kind of going on. And, uh, not really into like the outdoor thing. And he, the words that he said was, I hate cross country skiing. And by the end of that semester, he was saying. I really would like to have some cross country skis for Christmas. And so in eighth grade, we got him some cross country skis. And then in ninth grade, it was COVID and he's done every day with the sister. So it was really awesome. So. I'm, I thank Mr. Chronic for starting this program. I mean, he's really, he was really the trailblazer for this and he would take kids on Saturdays to go skiing to different places and. So, yeah, and after school, so, um, it's really awesome that we have this and we're hoping to grow it even more. When I ordered some, um, archery supplies, um, for the fall. Um, I'd love to be able to become certified, which means becoming a. Wait, like a, I know registered native guide, but then you have to have the water part of it, the fishing part of it in order to do like fly fishing and stuff like that. That would be really cool. I know my father and mother would love to come in and teach them how to type less. So. Um, do you guys have any questions for us? Cause I, I feel like I could go on for days, but I don't know, but.
What, what is ETL certification?
Educational trip leader. So the new cert that started back in October. State now requires anybody who takes kids, not so much the cross country skiing or any of that stuff, but to do anything on the water or overnight. You have to have that certification and that you can only take, uh, that certification is only for up to twelve people that can be under you. So if we wanted to have, we got twenty kids in the class, get them to certify teachers. We actually, um. This shows the dedication of our staff. We have five. Um, and that's, it's not, uh. Oh, yeah. So the great thing is it's part of the, uh, requirements for the certification. It's not just you send in something to the state. You have to do, well, there's first aid force, which is. It's intense. It was two, or Margaret did a separate one than I did. I did my that back in March. And it was a full weekend. I mean, it was two long days and we're out in snowbanks doing drills and all this stuff. It was, it was not fun. Well, well, it was great information and, and then we. I, I joined a few weeks after that, uh. The class and I brought that arena and said, you know, it'd be great to do CPR with the kids because it's one thing if. You know, something happened to a kid and we know what to do, but what if something happened to us?
Yeah.
So, uh, so the kids were great and I see Katie is on the, the zoom and she, when I said, you know. Can we borrow the, the fake Epi pens and the, the CPR dummies? She was totally on board with it. And so you could see them trying that in the class. It happened to be in that time period between. The snow was going away. It was kind of a mess and, uh, and so we had to do some stuff inside and they. Got to practice and they did pretty well with it.
Yeah, it was really cool to see them doing it. They were surprised with how hard they had to push down. It's like that. So that was pretty cool. Yeah. Yeah. So I think this was when. I remember this is one of our first times. We've gone to over to the gear library a few times. We really wanted that to be comfortable with that and we keep like kind of plugging it. So after home, okay, gee, by that day, guys.
It was, it was a bit personally. I speak, I gotta get, we gotta get some pictures of how, how honored you guys are.
Yeah, dedication. So through our northern main outdoor, um, cohort and through rural aspirations, um, they helped to pay for us to go to the university main. So they have, um, an outward bound program there and basically, um, we got to do the climbing gym, the climbing wall, which we have some really cool pictures of that. And this was like a ropes course that they have is behind that new giant facility that they have with the stairs track and everything. Um, oh, there's some climbing. So they had eighty blast. It was such a fun day. They were, so it's really cool just to show them. The university main so they could be on campus. It's like, you know, and of course, I went to university main. So I'd love to talk about university main. So, uh, it was just really neat for them to see that. And we literally had kids that had said, I have never been up to that. Really? Yes.
And this stuff here, this is all about team building and communication like this. They had to get in a specific order. On the log, they could not get off in the log like by birth date or something like that. And they had to figure, okay, whose birthday comes first and how do we get over each other? And it's funny and it was really funny to watch. I'll say that a lot. Um, and they did awesome. Everybody got along. It's just so nice to see this. So.
This is, um, a student that is gathering some fire building supplies and organizing them nicely. Yeah, he's got a sparch park and it's hopefully to get there. And this is us again, um. On one of our daily kayaking trips. It's hard to not take pictures because it's just sort of a lot of. Uh, and so there, the coming up, there will be some pictures of, uh, when we just this past week went to the tow pond facility. There it is right there. So. This is not part of like our outdoor ed program, but it's such a. You know, tight comparison to a really, because I can bring them up to the tow, uh, tow pond facility. And maybe hopefully in the future that can become more part of our outdoor ed program. I would love to see that happen. Um. These kids, and so this is the whole seventh grade class. And well, most of them, some of them didn't, um, but.
And others were dismissed early for softball.
Yes, yes, that's right. Yeah, we had a softball game. So, um, this was at the end of the day and they just had so much fun. I mean, we had one kid at the end of the day that. Looked right at Mr. Leatherson and said, I really kind of missed this place.
You almost might be around, like.
Oh, yes.
You realize that kids, they don't get to take advantage of stuff a lot. You know, their families might go do stuff, but probably not an orienteering course or kayaking into a pond because they might not have a kayak. Um, you know, the pictures there on the beach, that's not. The school's property, that part is the island that's in tow pond. But again, like. All this stuff, we've got such great relationships with all these organizations and with the family that owns that, that island. Um, you know, I talked to them and they're like, hey, yeah, you know, bring the kids there. Cause to me, that's the best view of the mountains and that beach is just fantastic. Um, and the kids always love it. And in previous years, last year, we had Barry Data, the former chief of the Knopscott tribe. Come up there and answer questions about, you know, uh, Wabanaki and the importance of cotton and all that stuff. So. I just forming all these relationships throughout your red and through these soap on trips. It's just been. Uh, just so great. Everybody's so supportive of it. When they hear what we're doing, they're like. I, every school should be doing this.
Yeah, and it is growing. I, I hear that in our cohort, like, you know, we have schools that are like asking to join us. Absolutely. Like, join us so we can all brainstorm together and we're. Already planning some professional development for the fall that we can, you know, decide as like a group, like, okay, what, how are we going to move forward? How can we develop this further and all that? So it's really cool to be a part of that group and thankful for that. So. Has some other questions.
I don't have any questions. I have a couple of comments. I'm, I'm really pleased to see that we're doing CPR again, kids that. We, we used to do that here and it kind of went away. Uh, that's awesome. And Kyle hit it right on the head when he said, you know, there's a lot of kids here that are athletic kids. But this is a whole different avenue and, uh. Thank you very much. It's that, this is great. This is, this is, you know, we're, this is our backyard. We need to, you know, we need to promote it and we need to educate them. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And I just, one last thing, I want to say that as far as like, cause we're, you know, kids are high anxiety, right? I see that more and more every year, especially since COVID. And I just really think that this is, this is social emotional bonding. This is like. They are, we had a student that was there that, um. Is a student that requires like basically one on one help throughout the day. And this student had a challenge in front of them and made that challenge. It might've been just paddling to paddle. They did it, you know, proud of themselves after saying all morning long. But then that student got in the kayak and started paddling and paddled. And so. They feel really good about themselves. So to me, that's the, it's shame tied on them is that they feel they're like so proud that they did it, you know, when they're sweaty and they're like, but they're so proud.
And you see the kids that, you know, maybe they've got a specific friend group or no friend in the, in the school. And then they get out to, you know, one of these trips for, you know, to pond or whatever, and everybody's just getting on. I mean. And knock on wood, but we never have behavior issues out there. It's, it's just, everybody just seems so much more relaxed about in nature and enjoying. This time. So it's, it's learning to them, but they, they don't even reply.
Yeah, absolutely.
And no cell phones.
And no.
They survived it.
Yeah. As we say, they have media phones inside. Yeah, and they're like, they're totally fine with that. Like, yeah, yesterday, we didn't get to use the whole time. We usually use like, and a lack of time in RTI. So it's a little bit longer. But because of the weather, we've decided not to. And so we were like, well, maybe we can just sneak in a quick walk. So literally all we did is just do a little walk and they're all. You know, he, he just really loved to get out and just, you know, do the, be active like that. So, so it's cool. So I'm thankful to work for a school that supports this. I, I don't think I would work for a student that did it, to be honest with you. So I'm, I'm really thankful to that. So thank you guys as well.
And as far as CPR, I'm, I'm hoping that we can, sure, cause we, we get certified in them, but we, I talked to Katie and it, it is something that we. We would like to do is have kids to be certified in this stuff because, you know, they do pretty well when we're practicing with those, you know, by not just staying with the next step.
Yeah, I mean, at the, the wilderness first aid has been offered to high school students as well to aid for free. And that opens up opportunities like. For them to work for businesses like Neon and Big Most, things like that if they're, and the gear library, my son works there and it wants them to get his first aid as well. So. Um, which is what we had to take them.
And that's not, like, you gotta take that every three years too. So I'll be doing that again.
Great.
Let's want to thank you for your dedication to doing that. It's, uh, it's just wonderful to see the kids get exposed. Like you were saying, some kids just don't go out there on that phone all the time or on that computer and have a couple of nice adults take them out. Through the kayak and across country skiing to snow shoeing. Uh, it's a blessing and thank you very much for doing it. Yes.
And I think the last thing I would say too was that. You know, the way that we, like, we care about our students in the class, obviously, and we have plenty of. You know, conversations within the classroom, but the kinds of conversations they have it outside. The way that they see us is totally different than in the class. It's just the environment change.
It's interesting. It's like, once you get them walking, it's like they just start talking.
Yeah.
They do. It, it happens all the time. They will literally just open up to you and just start talking. But as they're walking, it's amazing to really see it. It really is.
Great. Thank you.
Photo. Uh, she's a photographer. She has this slush doing tonight. It's basically an artist at the Orinon Library. So I told her I would scoot down and she said, please. Who just slowly. But thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice presentation. Okay. Moving on to number eight. I need a motion, Devin.
I move to approve the superintendent nomination authorized the superintendent, the air higher era McNulty as a middle school English teacher at step nine. The masters. Forty eight thousand, three hundred.
Second.
Any discussion? Jay, go on. Not a bad place to work, is it? What's that? Not a bad place to work. Number nine.
I motion, I motion to approve the use of Macan. In the middle of the school department beginning two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four year.
Second. Need discussion? So has anything changed? In the. Or this is, is this going to be our policy? Is this the policy we're going to follow?
Yes.
Okay.
If anything changes, it, and it would only be because something has changed at the state level. And, um, Katie has actually been in contact with the state at least twice that I'm aware of since we all sat together to answer a couple of questions. So she'll keep up on that before we actually ask you, um, you know, to totally adopt whatever policy we have in the fall.
My second question is to, did we get the answer to Kevin's question? Well, Kevin, did you get?
Yes, I was explaining to me that we didn't have any line. To do like the football games. Um, so I mean, that may be.
That was mine too, but I just want to make sure that you got the answer you.
Yeah. Is it a break? It's time for a discussion right here. It, it breaks my heart that we have to have something like this to schools. But. We do. And, uh, it would break my heart more if we have a, had a serious incident, S Terrence or. Middle school that. That. Do everything we could do to prevent it. Um, I don't, don't approve drugs and I don't want drugs. I don't like trust the community. But I don't want to see some little child, uh, suffer because they make a mistake when they're a kid. That's just my two cents.
The thing to let them know, this is done just for the students, this involves expected like that or anything. So. We have to look at it at, you know, on that aspect.
Yeah.
And my other question, I don't know if uh Katie can answer it or. Um, are we going, I know we have a partnership with Sabida, the town does, and I know the school does. Are we going to use them to come in and do the training?
I'm not sure. Um, Katie, have have you thought ahead to how that will happen or will you just manage that?
Um, I had asked Katie Cullen if she would come in and do a short training and then the state does provide some training materials. I mean, I'm certainly open to talking about it. It's just time is really um limited at the start of the school year. Um, but I think it would be great, maybe if we could have them come like on a workshop day. Um, to do like more of a training, but I think for the initial training, it'll probably um. Be much shorter and more condensed than that is what I'm thinking. Just because of time.
Cause in in saying that, that's how we got our training.
Okay.
We brought Sabida into do our training uh for the final. You know, and and that's a uh an excellent resource. They they just, they have so much to offer and. You know.
Was that a free training?
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. They don't try training and they're they're very, you know, they want to be involved in the community. They're still looking for office space to have an actual office here. So.
Along along the trainings be told.
With that training, well, the training we did was was an hour, but we went into more than just the the uh. Give me, you know, it's giving up.
So maybe you could reach out to them, Katie, and see.
Sure.
Your resources and and um see if we can get more in-depth information. We certainly haven't hours worth of time.
Yes. Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
I'm gonna have a question.
I guess I have a comment.
What?
Uh, I'm glad we're proactive, be active. Uh, we didn't wait for something to happen and uh. Then it would have been. No, it's not. How to how to build this wall, I think. I I'm pleased that we do, but if we save one kid, you know, for.
You have a moment? No, yes. Thank you, Katie, for for pushing this ahead.
You're welcome. Thank you for listening.
Well, you're rich for dying. Any more discussion? Seeing that all in favor? It's five hundred. Oh, ten. The board will approve the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four bread bid. Hmm. No, no bread bids. Turn next. It's real. Service manager will place bread orders. You'll bend this without set registry.
So continue to pursue if there's any possibility, um, but she did what normally happens and with no reply. Um, Warren was talking about it before we got started a little bit. We do have some options because obviously we have the local grocery store. But there's also Cisco and Dennis who we can get some bread products through. We're just gonna have to be really strategic on what time we get them so that we have them as fresh as possible.
Which realizes it's very hard to do a budget next year. Bread bids.
Well, I was gonna ask if we don't have a bid right now, say one came up by the next school board meeting. Can that be addressed at that time? We get.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're still assuming it.
Number eleven. To approve the twenty three, twenty four dairy.
Want to approve the old first dairy as dairy for the two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four.
Second. We're gonna decide. Oh, my God. Well, what have you read now? Right. Uh. Dairy. Of course, with many years. Seeing done, all in favor? Would like to read the notification of new bites. Chairman. Donna Boy, we will be the new elementary secretary. She will be at step two with an hourly rate of nineteen ninety five. For seven point five hours per day. Her first day of work will be August seventh, twenty twenty three. Summer school, summer school will run June twenty first to July fourteenth, four days per week, four hours per day. Director will be Danielle McNally, twenty five dollars an hour. Teacher Victoria Campbell at twenty dollars an hour. Teacher Danielle Wait at twenty dollars an hour. Ed Tech, Shelley Farrington at nineteen dollars an hour. Ed Tech, Kevin Guyerson at nineteen twenty an hour. Ed Tech, John Huggin at seventeen twenty an hour. Ed Tech, David Jamo at sixteen eighty an hour. Ed Tech, Corinne Wright Reese at seventeen twenty an hour. Ed Tech, Dawn Robbins at sixteen twenty an hour. Ed Tech, Taylor, uh, Taylor Soolander at eighteen forty an hour. Ed Tech substitute Shelley Illingsworth at eighteen sixty per hour. Ed Tech substitute Rhonda Tracy at sixteen eighty an hour. Summer food program, the summer food program will run from June twentieth to August the fifth, Monday through Friday, eight to twelve. Summer food service manager Mia Sherrett at twenty three dollars an hour. Summer food assistant John Bushar at fourteen forty an hour. And summer s- summer food service assistant Donna Siemens at thirteen eighty an hour. Yeah. I I have a question on, and I think I know the answer, but just for the clarification for people watching. The Ed Tax are different steps, correct? Is that?
It is.
As as with the assistants.
Yes.
It's whatever set they are in the.
During the school year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
First reading of policy revision? Don?
Motion to approve the first reading of G D A Central Office clerk. A second then.
More discussion? Along the computers, we go, we all get the policy. Is that is that a rewriting it? Were there any changes made in that?
We updated it to bring it in line with the results from negotiations for all three units.
Right, that's what I thought.
This one must be.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing that all in favor? Final. Oh, second reading of this, right?
We'll have to do a second reading next time. Yes. This is the first.
Yes, but yeah. Is this the we? Why did we vote on it?
Yeah, I'm just wondering that too, because we should have.
I think we found out that we had.
Did we finally have to do that? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Kevin.
My next meeting will be, we can vote on this. Okay. So I can see it done as soon as possible. So.
It would be the chairman's. Yep, yeah. The presentation report.
All right. Um, I asked, usually I go last on this, but I asked to go first because I wanted to share how we got to our reports this time. Um, because this is our last board meeting. That sounds funny to say, but the last one of this school year. I asked everybody who does a report to just share two things that uh they thought went really well this year. So for some of the people, you have more than that in the written report, but I've asked them just to share two things that were great um for them. Um, for our schools. So I have two things as well. Um, mine are communication and education. So in communication, I believe that regular routine communication is key, honest, open messages that share and create excitement among everyone. Education in general has its own twists and turns, but my efforts have been to reduce mystery, limit the need to. Limit the need for details to be manufactured because Millenocket schools are sharing details. This year, we've done a really good job with reciprocal messaging. And I appreciate everybody who has participated in that, and I hope that you as the board, our school and our community um sees results from that. Uh, my second thing that I think has gone pretty well is education in general, and I look at that like gardening, how appropriate for this time of year. Because a gardener has to have patience, problem solving and perseverance. You plant a seed, you bury it, and then you hope for nurturing to happen. And that's what happens in education. Every, every facet of our education, whether or not it is in the kitchen or if it is. Uh, plowing our roads or if it's doing something in the classroom, we all have this element of nurturing whatever we're doing. And so I am hoping that um my goal of growing trust, a recognizing potential and supporting the environment. Where everybody is feeling comfortable to try new methods and try new things. I'm hoping the longer that we all work together, that we'll see more and more um produced. Um, from just having an environment that is nurturing for everybody. So I'm very thankful for how things have gone. I'm gonna take the liberty of adding more than two things because I want to just highlight. The fact that um our school system now um off needs to offer on PAMM issue. Um, some gratitude for the fact that she learned a new system and has um. Properly paid our employees now for at least three cycles. And I'm not saying it is without total error, but this was a big undertaking under some extreme circumstances. So. From our system to her, I wanted to personally thank her for learning that new program. Um, I also wanted to take an opportunity to talk with you about the international program. Um, you know that we had Chelsea um hired as our coordinator. And she's done, she's made a new website. She's had a a host family meeting. We held that at the library. And she's made a lot of personal contacts and talked to uh different agencies that has shown us some results. We have the capacity of placing five students um starting in the fall. We accepted one student already and we had three in the pipelines. I'm trying to get the rest of their um credentialing and and whatnot ready. So at this moment, as we sit here, we potentially have four students in our international program for next year. So that's a great accomplishment in a very short time, um, because she's only been on board for about three months and she's really um done a great job. So I wanted to throw that out there too. And with that said, I'm gonna jump out of order here a little bit because uh Jolene is here and she has another commitment she needs to get to. So Jolene, if you'd like to share two great things in special ed land.
Well, the first big challenge we had was our um review, state review. Um, which I was part of as a teacher. And then we had our what's called our cap, which comes back and says, these are what you did really well. And this is what we need evidence to fix. They came, they did their training, um, showing this part of that. And then my team of teachers, we sat down for two days, went through filed, went through the exhaustive ten page report. And pulled evidence to support that. We sent that in on Friday and Saturday morning. I had an email from the state saying, wow, you've done a lot. We still have a few areas that we just have to pull senior evidence from, um, but we will be working on that. Right after school gets done. And then we have a couple of meetings we have to have um in the spring, in the fall, and that will finish up. Um, two of our other deficits will be at lunch for being done by maybe the end of September, about a month, month and a half ahead of schedule. Uh, yeah, then get ready to prepare for a couple more years and do it all again. Um, the other six facts is I want to thank my staff and thank my teachers. That have had to work under some extreme conditions of having to step up, take extra case loads. Um, manage things that they didn't think they had to do. Um, and just doing it and doing it without complaining, doing it for the benefit of the students that they work for. And I know this has been a rough year for them mentally and emotionally. And I've tried to support them as best I could with encouragement and giving them tokens to. Recognize all of their hard work because a lot of times they do a lot and they don't get that thanks. So. I want to say thanks to them because it made my job a little bit easier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the next one on the list is um Katie D. And um she successfully um submitted the the Kenny Bento. Remember a few months ago, there was a lot of money flooded in from the feds into those programs. And so all over our state, schools that have never really thought much about this and definitely had not had a review, um, were all being reviewed. And she did get that um into the DOE by the twenty fourth of May. And we should have approval by the end of June. So thank you very much to her for all of that work. Um, she also was instrumental in um supporting a step up day and a senior walk that took place at Granite. If you haven't seen uh the video of that, that was really, that was really fun. And I, just a little side note with that is over to Granite. Um, Donna took elementary school pictures of each of the graduates, put their name on it and put a picture on it and kids were holding their size. Our graduates' response to those signs was tearful. I think it was really, it was really an amazing gesture. Um, Katie is here. I'm not sure.
I think she.
Oh, she left. All right. Um, she, her successful, um, one of her successful pieces were, there's a new program called SNAP. And it's an electronic program. So they went from pen and paper recording and uh so they successfully navigated that. Um, we put into place standing orders here in Stern's. That's for things like an aspirin, a tongue, something like that where uh the parent signs the form. You don't have to call home every time, and that certainly is highly appropriate in the middle high school um time. A hundred percent compliance with uh student vaccinations. Uh, that doesn't always happen. And next year, she is hoping to um improve um our health and wellness program, and that would be for our our adults as well as our students. Um, Mia is home with sick children today, but um one thing that I guess I can skip right to the one that she was talking about. The summer food service program, if you're not aware of that, she um coordinates for seven community sites between Millenocket, East Millenocket and Medway. To provide meals to students at no cost for anybody under the age of eighteen. I was floored when she was telling me how this works and and she's now a staff member to make this all happen. But uh the 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 seven sites are everywhere, so it's really a tri-town um venture. And I could, I told her that was just absolutely amazing. And I'm not sure that she put it on here. Um, I don't think she did, but she actually is applied for still another brand. So she was awarded three this year and she's applied for another one. Um, so awesome job. Louis here, so you can tell us what has gone well.
Kevin, you're gonna like this. Um, I would say the the two biggest wins for me this year, this was the third year. After we did all the upgrades to the heating systems on both buildings and I was just able to top off the tanks last week. And did the final calculations, although we have been burning some fuel lately, the last couple of days. Um, but we saved over over eleven thousand gallons of fuel this year. Um, some of that certainly due to a mild winter, but not all of it. Um, so we really are seeing some savings in in the investment we made in the equipment and and being able to control it. I noticed that's really kind of excited me with the exception of our one ninety plus degree day. I am able to go in, like the auditorium was eighty something degrees and I'm able to go in and open things up right from home or from my computer at night and. Bring in the cold air and actually cool that space down for the next day and kind of our own cheap air conditioning and have it ready for the next day. So it's allowing us to do some things that we were never able to do and with some some great energy savings as well. So very pleased about that. And secondly, the one that bought me a a lot of peace of mind this year, the generators. Um, actually were put to the test on multiple occasions this year. Um, I don't even think, I think there were a couple of times there wasn't a soul in the building that even knew we were running on generators. Um, other than the IT department would call and say, hey, is the generator running? So I got some funny things going on. But uh, yeah, I was able to sleep a lot better this winter, knowing in the middle of the night when I would wake up and I would realize we were out of power. That uh I'd pull out my phone and look and I would get a text and it would say. That uh I pull out my phone and look and I would get a text and it would say generators are running at school. So uh that's a huge, huge win and buys a a lot of peace of mind. Uh we got a lot of exciting things. For the summer plans, a new fire panel at Sterns, um beginning work on that. We were working on the the remainder of the heating upgrades, which are the smaller things. Um that's already, we've been working on that now for a month. Spoke with paving people today and they are red, they've done all the markings in the parking lots, so that is ready to. Pretty much ready to go. Um really look, it's been two years in the making, so really excited about that. Um. So yeah, we're moving, we're moving forward on a lot of different things. Some of these things, it takes a while to get completed, but uh. I'm pleased with the results, so. That's all I got for you. Any questions?
You don't have to take questions today. I'm just teasing.
Well, we see eleven thousand, I keep wondering, do we meet on quota that we had?
We, a little bit surprised me. I think we're right in the balance. Um I I think we're right in that ten percent range. Um. They've never come back on me for it, so I'm not, I'm not gonna let them know. Hopefully they won't give us a call. But I think we'll be, I think we'll be good.
Um this is Katie, did you have something for the board tonight or are you taking this all in?
I'm taking this all in, but I do know you guys have eighty eight point eight eight percent. Eleven point one two month, previous year. What is the report that I read?
Do we have any big purchases what, out there that we know of?
Not that I'm aware of. The receiver will be okay. I do have support from my wait rooms of the um. The programs and the funding and I just put my invoice in for E U T students, that's another ninety three thousand dollars. So that's been completed. We should get that in a couple of weeks, hopefully close with this full year. And I'm looking at waiting grants and looking at that to order more front. That's what revenue coming in, may not come in before the end of school year, but I'm working department to see if we can expect that.
Thank you. Well, you are welcome to head home if you'd like. Um the next one is um Cody, um his report is right here. Um it didn't, you want to just type it out, it didn't get in before we were publishing this, so you're welcome to um go through his report. In your leisure. And then we're going to move on to Carla. Um Carla um has a lot to celebrate. So you wanna pick some of the highlights for us? That'd be wonderful.
I've got something to celebrate that's not even on the list. And that Friday afternoon, I bought a email saying that the second grant might put in. Great.
This year?
This year. News of this is I have managed to spend almost all of it. Thanks for working on it. I've got, I've got people that are willing to take part in this, something to go to professional development. Um. And we are looking into programs that will help us, so. We're getting.
So it's being spent, spent wisely.
It's being spent and spent wisely.
Great.
The other piece that I wanna say is not so much about good news, but a huge thank you to the staffing industry. For everything they've done to me this year. They have been wonderful. I heard horror stories about that. And I'm here to tell you that this is really good people. I specifically wanna point out Donna, who has been a tremendous help to me.
We thank you for your service for sure. We had a little roasted toast um earlier today at our admin meeting. So uh we, I think we properly thanked you today. Thank you very much, Carla. Um Nick is at an awards banquet. So the next couple of sessions will belong to Beth and she'll share some wonderful things happening in both their sets of programs.
Hello. Um so I'll read Nick Collins first. Um he says that. He is very pleased with the program that we, with the progress that you've made in scheduling. In the scheduling process for next year. We have been able to add a Sterns time period to our schedule that will be used to provide students with additional support. In areas of struggle as well as enrichment for students who are excelling. We will also be adding an advisor advisory program where each student will have a teacher. Who monitors their grades and provides support for each of them. We have also made some great growth in the athletic department. We have been able to use some grant money to put some much needed love into our fields. We have been fortunate to have some great community members as well as our athletic boosters make considerable donations. Towards new school scoreboards and signs for the fields. We are at the point where all of our fields have new or refinished scoreboards. That will add to the wonderful athletic facilities that we have here on our campus. So one thing that I am celebrating this year is Mr. Collins. Having an assistant principal and athletic director here has made a world of difference. Um as you know, before I was the only. Principal or assistant principal slash athletic director and um. It was a lot. Mr. Collins has has made an excellent partner for me. Um and then an excellent part of our admin team altogether. So I want everyone to know how much he is appreciated. So a couple of things and I'm kind of going to go over to myself, but. Just some of the things that I'm really excited about. Um one is our dual enrollment high school classes. So we have two right now and I'm waiting to hear on two more. So hopefully in the fall, um I should find that out this week actually. So hopefully in the fall, we will have, I'm hoping for four. Um but we will at least be having two and that's great news for our students as well as our staff. Um staff who want to do the dual enrollment classes are really excited about this. Um it provides that extra opportunity for our students. Um they've always had an opportunity here to take college courses. Um but as you know, mostly that's all online. And so here they will actually be with teachers that they already know and have relationships with. And it will be in person, which a lot of students find it much easier to go to their truck instructor for help. Um or questions or anything else when they're able to do it in person, so. I'm very excited about it. Who are the two people that are really lovely? Uh Hannah Loom and Bruce McLean. Hannah Loom for an English class, um it won't be college comp. It will be one of the other English classes, so her and I have to decide which one that will be. Um simply because she will have the senior, senior honors group. Which will be able to turn their honors English into a dual enrollment class. Um and many of them have already had the college comp.
Oh, okay. So any speech or composition?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So then um Mr. McLean already does an accounting class through EMCC. So that's no problem bringing it here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I want you all to know that, as you know, seniors graduated on Sunday. All of the events leading up to graduation went so well. Um they are an exceptional class. From their senior makeup day that they had to do on a Saturday. And they wanted to do it with the Granite Street littles coming over to play games with them and do a lot of activities. They were great. They were wonderful. Um baccalaureate was beautiful. Scholarship night, if any of you have not seen some of the totals of what some of our students were awarded, it was amazing. Um their class day was fun, they had a great time. I think Mr. Leathers and the boys that he honored really stole the show. Um bred their um senior class trip to Six Flags was wonderful. They had a great time. Um even seniors that were kind of on the fence that said, well, I'm not sure if I wanna go. We kind of talked them into going. Well, I should say, not we, but their classmates talked them into going. They were very. Inclusive, wanted wanting everyone to go. Um so I talked to a few of those students after the trip and they said, I am so glad I went. I had the best time. So um and then graduation itself went really well. We had a wonderful guest speaker, Sean Dewitt, he did a great job. Our valedictorian, Cody Briggs. Our salutatory, Jamie Yang, and our class president, Sydney Campbell. All did a great job. So it it was wonderful.
He knows it, don't.
And then the final thing that I'd really like to talk about a little bit are the grants that we have. On a regular basis in the new ones that we have in progress, so the. The local entitlement and the um the title grants are moving along. Um the SR is also moving along. Um. We had to do some reports with that a while ago. Cody Clinton and I sat down and spent a day working on that. He was a. Awesome. He was a terrific help. Um and then the other two grants, the Melmat grant that we were awarded. So so far with the Melmat grant, we have had an eighth grade step up day. With the eighth grade, um out of twenty-three eighth grade families, fourteen attended with their student. It was a night of sleep and freezing rain. So even having that many attend was great. Um we talked about scheduling, what to expect in high school, we talked about classes, so. As the parents were there with them, they could help them with their schedules and choose their classes. Um it went really, really well. We did some um raffles and had pizza. It was, it was really great. Sue Buzzle put that all together and as always, she did an outstanding job. I cannot say enough good about Sue Buzzle and all that she does for our students. So much happens behind the scenes that no one knows about and um Sue is number one to look for credit. So I think that needs to be said. The career fair that she and Mr. Leathers put together um had thirty-two vendors. And it was great. The kids were. Very surprised actually at how many opportunities that they have right here in this area. That going off to college doesn't mean then going even further away to find employment in whatever occupation they want. Many of them discovered that I can come home. And I can work here, I can live here, I can still go out in the woods and do all that great stuff I learned in outdoor ed. Um so that was really great. We invited some other area schools. Um Katadina unfortunately was unable to attend, but Skang did bring their students up and they were very appreciative too. That went really well. Um they did a survey. Of the Stern students and seventy-nine percent said they were much more aware of career opportunities in our area. Eighty-seven percent were satisfied with the range of the companies and industries um that were present. And they also made some really good suggestions that we'll be looking at next year, putting putting the next career fair together. Um and the final thing with the um. With the Melmat grant is the purchase of the Naviance program. And the Naviance program helps students to find career paths. It also is a place for them to build resumes. Um do college applications and everything and it stays in that central location. There are various quizzes for their interests and things and it gives them some ideas of maybe other careers. And the pathways to get there that they didn't know about. And one of the good things about this program is that these kids will be able to use this program up to four years after graduating. So in other words, when they're in college and they say, oh, I wish I had my, I still had my high school resume or my transcript or my. You know, college um essay that I wrote, they can still access all of that material. So. It's a really good program. Um we've had a few trainings, there'll be a few more and every time there's a training, everyone learns a little bit more. So I think that will be really um beneficial for our students. And the final grant piece uh that I wanted to talk about was the CDS grant. I kind of mentioned this a little bit before, but I wanted everyone to know um. The actual total of the grant that I applied for is one million two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. And it includes a whole host of different things for our entire district. This is not. A Sterns grant. This is a Milunoket School Department grant. There is just as much at Granite Street as there is here. And in fact, I think if we look at the projects, it may be a little bit more for Granite than there is here, which is fine. It is what's needed. So. It includes a lot of things like um new curriculum, new textbooks. New classroom furniture, um. Desks, um a new science lab here at the high school, which has not been updated since probably the school was built. I really might know that. Yeah, so probably since the school was built, so a new science lab for, you know, a lot of. Um a lot of their experiments and their anatomy classes and various things that they need a science lab for. Um there is a whole host of different things in this. So I spoke to um. Cole from Senator King's office the other day. This grant is in the appropriations committee. So I've been told that the process works at the appro- appropriations committee looks at it, talks about it. Decides whether or not they think it's worthy or decides if they wanna push the whole grant forward or if they want to push maybe part of it. Right now we're looking really, really good. So when I spoke to Cole, um they wanted a few more details about some of the projects. And he and I went over this where we laid everything out, broke down prices. Um and he said, gee, I don't think they really took a hard look at that, cuz that's exactly what they wanted to look at. Um and. We should hear at some point soon. They couldn't give me an exact date or anything, but if it gets through appropriations. The next step is the federal government passing their budget. And if that gets passed, then we'll find out about, we'll be awarded this grant. So that's really exciting. This could be. A game changer for both buildings for, you know, instructional purposes. For our classroom environments, um and everything in here. And I would be more than happy to share this with you guys. Everything in here is to benefit our students. So I'm really excited.
That was a nice presentation. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I I wanna say one thing that. That was in meetings with uh Senator King and. And she had us here. That that's good that we have senators that come to the area and and we're able to. You know, help the area and. Uh but she did, she was on the sales pitch.
Yeah.
But it's uh it's good to have the people on our side.
In ED that works in this office has been phenomenal, but she has been wonderful. So.
And when they're, and when they're asking questions like that. You're pretty much. That means that they, if it's through appropriations.
Fingers crossed.
I had two things. And I know I'm not stacked, but. I had a little one that did uh Saturday with seniors. I had a little one that did the Saturday with seniors.
Yes.
Not actually the right time, but. And and staff was prepared for people like me, and they took him in the gym and when I picked him up at eleven. He was all one of them. And I just heard people all all the time talking about how great it was, how this is something that should be done every year. Yeah. I think it was a tremendous. Showing of the seniors.
Yes. The seniors took it over. We as a staff were there to help and were there to supervise, but the seniors took it over, they took control. They were wonderful with those little ones, wonderful, and they had a lot of the little, little ones. And none of them had a meltdown, none of them were upset, they were all laughing and. Skipping and running and they just had a ball, it was really fun to watch.
And 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 that's all I heard, just great things about it, and I said, well, it's too bad it had to be a makeup day with seniors, but. Yeah.
The seniors had a great time.
Yeah, and anyway, geez, maybe they just would want to do it well. It was on Saturday, so.
Well, the seniors told me that they had a really great time doing it, and it was obvious watching them. The seniors were having just as much fun as the little ones were.
I actually showed up maybe a little early to see how things were going and stepped into the gym and just watching everybody interact. The littles and the babes and and just running around.
Yeah.
And everybody playing together, you stand a great time, it was really good.
This, the seniors told me that they were very happy that that's what they had chosen to do for their makeup day. They said it was just, it was the best.
Yeah, and we, I really appreciate that, it was great. The other thing I'd like to mention is the Granite Street Fun Day. I didn't get to participate this year, but I did get to kind of slowly walk around the building after surgery. And uh a lot of new faces. Some old faces, but it was nice to see the amount of volunteers has not changed to come to help out.
It was really good to have parents back in the mix.
Yeah.
And I think it's the first time since COVID that that had parents back in the mix.
So very nice to see them. So and some older people who might not been in the building anymore, like Mrs. Cassidy. Back up to her antics with the hoes, but she was like, hey, you laugh. Yeah, I walked by very gently, but it was like, it was nice seeing Debbie Cassidy back again. In the building and and at the, at the field day, so those are my two things.
Excellent, thank you for sharing in the celebration. Excellent.
Kevin?
I had three or four things I wanted to comment on.
Two.
And I just, this being my first year on the school board. And I wanted to just uh do just bullets, like to thank Dr. Lane. For promoting communication with the community, with the parents and with the town council, I think it's made for a lot, lot better. Uh I'd like to thank Louis and the principals and the and the business uh. Person for coming to the meetings, for submitting a report, so I could understand what was going on and. And if they were here or if they couldn't be here, I could ask questions, and I enjoyed that very much. Uh I'd also like to thank Cammishu, who did so much this year to help. Uh explain things to me as a newbie and help me uh get through it. And I'd like to thank Warren for putting me on the policy and building grants committee, which I think I learned quite a bit from it. And I know Donna and I were both on it, and uh it it was very informative and I enjoyed it very much. And I'm looking forward to the next two years and I just want to say thank you to you all, you know, school members.
Yeah. Anybody involved? Uh a couple of things. You know, we're we're, we look at our school system sometimes and we wonder. What's going on in the community, what is what's going on? They don't realize, and you don't realize until you sit here. What what actually is happening and how lucky we are. I mean, I think we were extremely fortunate to get Dr. Lane. And her leadership is really showing. We have our administrators that are going above and beyond, we've got administrators and we've got teachers writing grants. That never happened here before, we've got uh the staff is. Regenerated, they ju- they just seem to be. Enthusiastic about everything's going on, I I I can't say enough about. Their leadership, you know, and the staff that we have at this school. You know, I'm looking through these as they they're reading these reports and and Kevin knows, because Kevin's been involved in. You realize that the summer food program started twenty years ago. I started out of the transition team and we didn't know what to do with it, and we were both on the school board at the time and we said. Let's talk to the school. And the school graciously took that and and has just blown it out of the water. You know, so many kids in this community, no, not this community, but for this this region. That that's benefiting, we have kids that are dropped off and don't get any, we know that. They were being dropped off to the pool and just and left. You know, we talked Louis and and this this building and and you know, how. How fortunate we are, how, you know, this building doesn't show its age because of the way it's kept. You know, and and you go on to look at all this, you know, this, this, this thing tonight with the with the outdoor ed. I can remember when we started this with Bobby Gonya up to Toga Park and and. Bob, you know, he would be ecstatic to see where this has gone and and we're actually doing what he had visioned. For that to be, uh you know, and like to say, with with O S I and all the other groups that we've got in the community. We've got trails right off the back door. We're a very fortunate community, sometimes we wonder. Uh you know, and and I served fifteen years on this school board and got off, said I was done. And I came back. Just to see if I could help. And I'll tell you, the last year and a half has been a thrill to me. It's it's. Everything has gone so well, we've had some rough spots, but we've gotten through them, we've gotten through them without fighting, we've got through them without. Everybody getting mad at everybody, and I think the leadership is why that's happened. So I want to thank everybody and and especially the the school and administration and and teachers, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, everything Johnson's been. Uh pleasure again to be on the school board, you know, I was. I don't know if I was burned out or I was just, you know, I I wasn't sure if it was really worth it all. Uh the great stuff that happened to you. You made a big difference, you know, the community, you, the staff and everyone and. Just hearing some of the things, good things that have happened, that didn't hear that as much before, I appreciate it, I'm glad to read it again.
Always me left to meet the. Dr. Lane has made a huge difference here, in my opinion, my, and what I see going on, and it's been a pleasure, we started out rough in the on this board. Lost a couple of members. Their own choice, I believe, but uh I may be quiet, but I I support, I'm very supportive and I will. Always look for the right way to go. And I I do thank you for a great job.
Okay. Upcoming meeting? July eighteenth. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second. Yes, we do, June twenty second at.
Well, yeah.
Well, yeah.
June twenty second. Oh, I'm sorry. I believe it's five thirty. I don't know. I actually got about that meeting, right, and that's on the uh. That's what the town will give their audit and they'll give the school their audit. All in favor? Five votes.
Thank you.
Thank you.